I'm meeting at the.
Hello, everybody. I am calling this February twenty sixth regular meeting of the Makers RE six school board to order. The time is five fifty nine P. M. Heather, roll call, please.
Emily Hedgeson Brown, here.
Kim Hunter.
Rosie.
Craig Manley.
Here.
Rachel McQuarrie.
Here.
Victor Figueroa.
Here.
Everybody, please join me in. Our pledge on allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody, for being here. We've got a couple attendees. I'm super excited. Please turn off your cell phones. Hold sidebar. Conversation's outside. It is a meeting of the Board of Education in public that rather than a meeting with the public. There are two times for public participation. If you did want to participate and were not on the agenda already, the signup sheet is there near the door. One is at the beginning, one is at the end of the meeting for general comments relating to school issues to be heard. Um, let's see. When you are called on for comments, please state your name clearly, et cetera, and then commentary to prove it. Okay, so we are going to start off with approving the agenda we have in front of us for the February regular meeting. If anybody would like to say a question.
Second, please.
Heather, will you call the question, please?
Craig Manley.
All right.
Victor Figueroa.
Hi.
Kim Hunter.
Hi.
Emily Hedgeson Brown.
Hi.
Rachel McQuarrie.
Hi.
Excellent. Okay, um, we have two sets of minutes to approve on this particular occasion. Our January twenty second, twenty twenty four special meeting minutes, we'll do those first. Um, if anybody would like to move for approval, or are there any changes?
I move to approve as written.
Okay, Tim, do we have a second?
Hi.
Hi. Hold a second.
Heather, will you call the question, please? Craig Manley.
Hi.
Victor Figueroa.
Hi.
Kim Hunter.
Hi.
Emily Hedgeson Brown.
Hi.
Rachel McQuarrie.
Hi.
Okay, that carries five zero. Now, we've got our regular January twenty second regular meeting minutes to approve if we have a motion.
I move to approve the minutes presented.
I have a second.
Heather, call the question. Craig Manley.
Hi.
Victor Figueroa.
Hi.
Kim Hunter.
Hi.
Emily Hedgeson Brown.
Hi.
Rachel McQuarrie.
Hi.
Also carries five zero. Um, is there any public participations I have though? I don't think there is. Good. Okay, all right.
So, Madam President, we could go to DAC first as we look for Mr. Riddle. That'd be great.
Absolutely. So, we're gonna skip down to our DAC in-person report, and I assume that is why Mrs. Everett is here. So, Caitlin, if you can give us an update on DAC.
Um, so we went over objective two A with the trauma-informed training. And we actually, I think, had a lot more discussion on this than we thought that we would. But really, I think, what it boiled down to is we built the staff already. The classroom teachers already deal with this on a daily, especially younger. Longer, younger grades deal with it more than the older grades. Cause you, I don't know, but there seems to, you know, seems to tear off, but there still needs to be, you know, that in the secondary. Mr. Cordray brought up the, you know, how we define trauma and trauma-informed training. And if we thought that equity was a part of that, and really, none of us felt that it was an equity-based thing, that was more just. And that trauma could be really anybody's thing. It's not really an equity.
Thing. Anything else, Mr. Cordray, that you remember to? And I, I, I remember you brought up linkage to us, right?
Yeah, so there is a piece about linkage, but as it relates to two A, you know, one of the things we did do is we did speak and go over the definitions of what social emotional learning is and trauma-informed practices and emotional intelligence and restored practices. What was very clear with the DAC is they did understand and really affirm the need for the school district to continue with the practices, to look at the whole child as opposed to narrowly defining its obligation to the community as just academic. There was a very clear understanding by the DAC that in order to get the best academic performance for students, that they, that their, their emotional, psychological needs also had to be met. And so it was important for the DAC to, to consider, you know, what is the scope of the school district? And, and I would say that they really felt that it was important for the school district to continue with these practices and that what's written in the strategic plan does represent what the DAC would like to see continue. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yeah, there's really no way that learning could ever happen if needs, those emotional needs were not met. And we don't have a staff that would ignore them for the most part anyways. So, but yeah, it is very important. You're not going to teach a student or an entire class with a student that's struggling if that student has not helped. And that was kind of a thing. And another thing was, you know, when people think trauma, they think trauma at home, but it was also brought up that certain students, you know, their trauma stems from school and just making sure all those needs are met and that, that, you know, parents' needs are met when it comes to their student with school issues as well.
Yeah, so there was an important conversation around, you know, what, what do students experience at school? You know, what is, what is bullying? How does that, how does that impact a, a school district to pay attention to, to trauma and being trauma-aware and trauma-informed? And doing, what can a school district do to provide, you know, opportunities for students to learn about social, emotional learning? In addition, I think what we also heard from the DAC is that, you know, this, this standard is written at approaching standard, and the DAC felt like that was appropriate. There's, there's a lot more room for growth. This is, this is a very difficult standard. It's a very high bar for us to be trauma-aware and be trauma-informed and also to make sure that students feel comfortable in, in school and other places. So, they also felt approaching standard was the appropriate rating for where we're currently at.
Perfect.
And then for board linkage, what were your thoughts around board linkage?
I don't really remember that part. I wasn't up before I got there.
Could be, I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, I wasn't too.
You know, one of the things that they, that the DAC brought up for a potential group for the board to link with was, uh, parents of out-of-district students. Those, those parents have made a conscious decision to, to bring their kids here at, at additional, um, transportation expense and inconvenience. They, they are, they obviously have, have an opinion about the district, and it would be good for the board to link with them to find out, you know, what, what needs are we providing that others aren't, that would, that has encouraged them to bring their kids here. Is it, is it, is it sports, or is it the whole child approach, or is it specific teachers, or is it curriculum, or is it programming? We don't, you know, until we speak to those twenty-two percent of our, our parents, we, we don't know. So, I thought that was very, that was really insightful.
Really good idea. My question would be, I would look for suggestions, Todd, from you as to how we could do that effectively, since they're driving in their kids, right, to drop off and pick up. What are they coming to on the regular where we could be present? Is it the, the, you know, demonstration, um, the fall and spring academic PBL showcase? Is it parent-teacher conferences? Is it, you know, that's the hurdle? How do you connect?
There is a parent on BAC that is an out-of-district parent, and she thought having a special night where out-of-district families are invited, cause then they can also network amongst themselves. That they're like, oh, I can do two nights, you could do whatever that may be, but to have some sort of network then between those families, um, that that was like an invitation-type thing for out-of-district families to know how many other out-of-district families are there, and then you could really, you know.
Connect the dots. Yeah. So, we would have to lean on the district to identify and I, I love the idea. I think it's a great idea.
Sounds good, I guess.
Yeah, it's on the radar.
Another thing I, I would, and this is more work, and I don't, I think we have enough work, you know, but it's something that we talked about in the past, and I, I still think it's just would be so critical to understand how kids are doing once they graduate. So, once they graduate high school, we have kids going to various, um, places from, from college to the workplace, to military, to various places. But I think there's like, you know, I mean, we've had classes that are thirty-five, we've had classes that are twenty-five, and I just, I'd just like to see that the district can come up with a process of reaching out after their first year. Like, it'd be nice, like, move my daughter to reach out to her and say, hey, how is it going? Where did you go? What are you doing? You know, ask some specific questions. And then more specifically, you know, when you think about what you learned in high school, how is that, how is that going for you in the environment you're in? Like, how, you know, you know, did we hit the mark? Did we, should we emphasize something, you know, more here or more there? You know, you have to come up with the questions, but something not long but short that they could look at and then fire back electronically. Is that more work? Yes, but boy, it would be great information for, for us to, to not only the board to look at, but mostly operations, teachers, administrators, as they plan the next year.
Should we delegate that to the alumni association?
Yeah, right. Good luck.
Well, that's part of why I, that's part of why I said that.
Because it ties to the alumni association.
Yeah.
Because it's alumni, and it's, that's, that's inherently always been a real.
And if you start, my, my point being, if you start making contact with these kids first year after you're out of school and start some follow-through, then that thing, the alumni thing actually stays in, in their heads, and over the course of time and over the course of years, you will get that kind of input.
Makes sense. I think it's also coactively an extension unto a. I think we're talking that we have students, we're just not, they don't leave our care once they're out the door. You know, this is just a follow-up, saying, hey, you're still community, you're still family, you know, and it'll echo down. Yeah, I can create that. I, I don't know that.
But again, like we just said, it's, it's work to do that. I don't know where to, where's that's gonna come from.
I haven't seen a school district.
I was just gonna ask you. I was gonna say, is there a district somewhere that does it really well?
Haven't seen it.
Right?
I'd say it's not there, but I haven't seen it in my time. It's always been talked about, but it's been overwhelming to try to figure out how to do it.
You know, it's interesting. I was, I was on campus today, and I observed a young man over in Kim Russell's room. He was substituting, and I was like, oh, is that a student-teacher? And, uh, somebody was like, no, that he's a former graduate, and he's substituting Mitch Young, which I, it was great. The kids were like, I mean, just flocked to him and listening and, and it brings to light what we're talking about. That's a former student who's now serving inside of our student walls, but at a very young age. I mean, you moved back, I moved back. Like, a lot of people come back to the valley, but we're not really able to identify when and how and why and figure that out, because those are resources. I, I would love to know, but of somebody, somewhere that does it.
The first place I guess I would look at when I think about that is, we have, we have the students here, and we have their parent emails, we have their.
We have the data.
We have, we have information out there before they graduated, and maybe that's the place to begin. Who, whoever, whatever, you know, we put this, that would be the first contact.
Be a great loop back for career development, too, to be able to go back and say, hey, what college degree did you get? Where are you at? Would, because we're presenting career-to-career demonstrations remotely all the time, right? But truthfully, in ways, some of us have to kind of say, hey, I got, I got a story to tell, right? So, if we were to be able to go out and touch point to all of those graduates and say, what's your story to tell? It would give us a better life, a better, um, resource library for those to come back and say, hey, I am a graduate of this district, and this is now what I do. And I reside here or there, and maybe even develop a, a menu or an opportunity of choices. So, you're right, it's there, but we have to figure out how to tap into it. That's the challenge, and that's.
So, should we go to linkage for now and look at it?
Yeah, I've got, I think that not only the out-of-district, but also linking to our graduates. Those are two big areas of linkage that we could certainly lean upon. So, okay. I'm getting there, timekeeper.
Put me down, retired.
I know, you're serious about it. Okay, we're gonna go back to our, Mr., our student update. Um, so we have, uh, Mr. Riddle here to present with, um, students who I hope you will introduce to us, sir.
So, Kim Torrey. We tell Randy. Hey.
Hello, ladies.
I have very little to do with this, except that I facilitated the application process. The town hall reached out, and they needed somebody to connect with the kids, uh, to get kids that were interested in the liaison program. So, these were the three applicants that jumped on it right away, um, and so I just helped connect them with the town. And then since then, it's been their show, so I will let them speak to the work they've been doing.
Love it. Love it.
So, what do you wanna know?
So, Torrey, Randy, Haley, if you guys could kind of start a little bit from the beginning, and just, this group does not know what you're doing, so we, we wanna know what you're doing, and then, um, what that requires of you, and also maybe like what your interest in doing what you're doing. And then also, you wanna say thank you for doing it, and thank you for representing the district. So, I, I think that might be a frame.
So, like, starting from the beginning, I guess I kind of wanted to do it because, like, even after going to the Casby conference and stuff with you guys, like, I kind of just found like this is super cool to be involved in certain, certain things, and it's cool to like, kind of know what's going on in the town, too, even though we're the student liaisons, but basically, I did it because it gives me more chance to be like into the town and figure out certain events and stuff going on, and I kind of just really enjoy this next one.
Great. And what's your guys' expectation with the town? What is the, the, what expectations has the town put on you? And how are you showing up there, and how often, and that sort of thing?
Uh, so basically, um, every time they have a board meeting at town hall, we go there, we have new issued, uh, town-issued laptops freed off the board packet and to take notes and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And while we're there, they ask for updates from the schools. We tell them about events and stuff that's going on, and, you know, just general stuff with the school to kind of connect the town and the school together, and yeah.
That's great.
Do you all three attend all of the town board meetings?
We do, except me and Randy. I missed some because we have basketball, so.
So, that's good. We miss and have each other's back.
Yeah, like, we rotate every time. Well, Tori will have a little more than us, but we rotate every time. Like, two of us will sit at the, like, kind of table with Heather, like, the administrator and whatnot, and then one person sits on the board each time, and it just rotates through all three of us.
So, what's the expectation as it relates to giving the town board feedback? Like, what do they expect from you? Why do you sit there?
Um, they expect us to give them updates about, uh, the school so that , um, the town can kind of like feel closer to the students, be more connected to the student body and what the town is doing, what the school needs, you know?
How do you guys feel about the town caring for your voice?
I mean, it's pretty cool, actually, because like, there's a lot of places, like, I guarantee Cortez doesn't do this. I know Dolores doesn't do it. I feel like it's kind of cool that Makers is actually like, we're a small town. I feel like it's kind of cool that they're actually trying to like bring in more voices than just like the adult voices in the community. And like something they were saying, like, we're all super different, us three, and like, when they all brought us in, they're like, you guys are so diverse. Like, we can't choose between the three of you. So, it's like, it's cool that they're trying to bring in a bunch of different voices.
And when you are at the town board and you're asked to update, do you all feel, one, prepared to do so, and two, heard when you're doing that?
Yeah, I feel like we are. Like, I always, before I am, like, I always put, make a note of like everything that's going on in the school. And, I mean, they listen. Most of the stuff, like, they can't really give us input on, like, they're not gonna tell us where to host prom or anything.
Like, you never know.
I mean, they're just not.
Right.
Like, but they listen to us.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. And where are you getting your information as far as like your updates?
I feel like we kind of like talk to each other throughout the day. We're like, is there anything like important you know? Like, if we're not the one talking, like, I'll usually ask them if I'm the one talking that day. And then like, there's a few times where I've asked Rar, or I've asked Riddle, just like if they have like any big thing they need updated, but other than that, it's kind of just stuff we know that's super common within the school that they can get out, or they wanna know maybe, like, prom dates and whatnot.
Okay. Um, I would highly encourage you to use the website, right? Use the resources at hand that you have that you can reference pretty quickly, so you're, you're sharing or pointing the community to go to that one, you know, like, mothership main point of knowledge at all times, right? Just to give you a little help on that side as you're rushing to your meeting and you have to speak publicly. But I, I personally, I thank you all, and I think it's very brave of you, uh, and very, um, it speaks a lot that you're willing to sit at that kind of a table and speak, and that's not easy to do, so it's a skill set, for sure. You have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I just will add for you guys, I know that, you know, eventually you're gonna graduate and do the things that you're gonna go, go do in life. Just from a, from a school perspective, um, because you are volunteer, because this is volunteer time that you're doing, and I know you'll get credit for that, but it'd be nice to get again some sort of certificate from the school district officially that basically says, you know, I was representing the school district, or something that's formal, because all of that can go on your resume and will help you as you apply to different places and different, uh, adventures. It just will help you, um, because colleges, military, workplace, they wanna know what you've done via to, uh, coming on to that, you know.
There's scholarships for that, too. That was really nice.
So, it'd just be nice if there was some, some sort of official, and that also helps other kids say, hey, I wanna do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What I'm gonna say would be that I was a town trustee at one time, um, and one thing that we had difficulty with was, um, doing what was actually going on at the school. We would get, uh, brief reports, and it was very, very rare, and, uh, communication wasn't the best between the school district and the town. So, while you all have been there to represent the school district and for them to open up and, and lie to be heard and be a part of the process, that's, is a huge thing. Before, the only thing that we would have communications on really were, uh, when and where the bonfire was gonna be. I really appreciate that you're out there and you're using your voice and representing the school, and, um, you should really take that like, that, you know, what you're doing is actually very, very important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I have one more question. The, the board's been thinking about, um, how do webinars bring a student on this board as a liaison or a student voice? How would you guys speak to that? What, what do you guys think of that idea? Would it be, would it be a good way for this board to hear a voice, or do you have other suggestions?
Um, I feel like it'd be a really good suggestion, especially for the school, cause like with the town and stuff, we're just trying to like give like little updates on what's going on in the school without like telling them unnecessary things they don't need to know. But like for the actual like school, like asking students like their opinions on things, that like it's gonna be changed for them. I feel like that would be super cool, like especially like if you got maybe one or two like diverse like us three. Like, I feel like that's a really good idea.
If they were to do that, do you have any suggestions for how they would go about finding the right students so that they hear a wide range of voices?
Definitely like applications. Like, we had to fill out like a pretty long application saying like, we had to write like a one-page essay, I think, about why we wanna do it, not just like, oh, cause it's, cause it looks good on my resume. Like, obviously not, but, you know, like, actually having an interest in, like, caring, you know, like, not just getting someone who just wants to put it on their application.
I still have my application in my backpack if you wanna see it.
And, and, and if there was an ask involved to Mr. Cordray's question, much like the ask was made of you through the town, that you attend a monthly meeting, is that something that is concerning to you? Or would you, um, be willing to do so? Cause it's outside of hours of school.
Are you asking like us three or other?
Just as, as you three as students, would you be willing to come to a Monday night meeting for a couple of hours once a month?
Yeah. I mean, the board meetings honestly can last like that long, if like till nine o'clock at night, like. It's.
I think they started seven, started seven.
Oh, it, it's not a big deal really at all.
Okay, good. Good feedback. And would you feel, um, that it was more than, so here's where my drive is. I don't, personally, I would, I would like to know, like, if you would feel as though you, it would be worth your time and you would be contributing not just a seat at the table. Like, there's a difference, right? Is there a value? Do you see value at sitting at this table and listening to all of this and being called upon for an opinion?
Yeah, I can see value in that because I feel like, even with that Casby thing, like, I promise, but like, a bunch of them have like student liaisons with their school board, and there's like a little team of students that like actually make super big decisions, and they like, they really help because it's hard to be like in your position and know what the students are thinking and feeling about their school, like, they're, the way it's going for them, instead of just trying to like see it, but knowing what they're feeling. I feel like that's something that means something, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. It's more than just a link. It's a, I know, there's value in your words, in your opinion, in your participation. Tim?
Just, we do this, they need to be honest and tell us the true, true stuff that's going on, not what, not what you think we would wanna hear. I mean, seriously, cause oftentimes, those are different things, and there are some political ramifications to those kind of things, especially for you guys. Going back to school after you're talking to the school board, it could be, I don't know what it could be.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot to it, for sure. Craig, do you have any? Good? Good. All right. Well, thank you, ladies, for your time this evening and outside of school hours, and Mr. Riddle for connecting the dots. You were a very positive voice at Casby, and, um, I love that you, Randy brought that up a couple of times because it shows me that there was, there was really some impact there, and we have not let that waver. It's not gone. It's just, we're trying to step through the process of how to make it happen the right way and, and, and so that we're not rushing in and that we're really, um, to Mr. Cordray's point, you know, setting it up for success. And, and, you know, there's an application, there's a process. Are we really going to get student voice that's meaningful and can participate? So, that really did spur out of Casby. And also historically with other boards saying, you know, this is something we could do, it's something we could do, but it's hard to, it's hard to lift something like that up off the ground. It's a, it's a, a new, a whole new thing to put into practice, right? So, there's a lot of policy and other things that go along with that that all has to be worked out. So, just know that it's still alive and well. other things that go along with that that all has to be worked out. So just know that it's still alive and well. And we thank you for your time very much. Thank you, ladies. Now you have many kids in the district and you know where these kids should be. You're hired.
They have to practice for us.
I know, right? Uh, all right. Okay, we are up to our um LRC and Casby report both uh with Mr. Figaroa.
Okay. So I'm gonna start off with the Casby report. These are gates to say, I know our board likes to know things way ahead of time, so um so here's some. So we have the full conference and delegation assembly. Most of the time, I'm the only one that goes to that, but any of us can go to that. Um, and it's October eighteenth and nineteenth.
It's in Denver.
And it's in Denver typically, but I don't know for sure because they do move it around.
Okay.
So I'll let you know when I find out. Um, and then there's the Casby Annual Convention, which we all go to. And that's December fifth through the seventh. So um just keep that in mind. And then um and then we have the Casby Winter Legislative Conference, which I'm going to on Wednesday. Um, so I'm driving up to Denver and that's where I'll have the opportunity to meet with legislators. And um share with them our um political platform that we all um um created and um and try to advocate for the needs that we have in our district and rural districts in general.
And that's this Wednesday?
It's um driving up this Wednesday. It starts Thursday, Friday. And I'll be back on Saturday.
Okay, so that's uh the twenty eighth, twenty ninth.
Alright, um and then I'll just again to to um inform the board of different um supports that Casby has. Um, if we're interested in the engagement strategies, that we can, we can talk with them about that, effective boards, and board member offerings. Developing and adopting policy, student, um and the First Amendments. Uh, working with board attorneys, uh board education meetings, best practices. These are all um topics that can be accessed. Um, if uh we wanted to as a board to uh to get more information, more support in these areas, school finance is another one. Just some different things around that.
So if we did um find a path to bring student voice in a more significant way, it sounds like Casby has a couple of resources that can really give us kind of a platform, more so than just this practice.
So we, as we look at that, we probably want to grab those resources as well and really lay it down, just see if um there's anything we can really use. Hey, I'm gonna hop onto the LRC update. Um, House Bill twenty four one oh oh three is a bill that's um about opium antagonists and detection products in school. And so currently the law says, the law allows us to have these products in our schools and for staff to uh administer them if if appropriate, without going into legal issues, um because you applied them. This law adds on to that. It adds on uh plus staff, plus drivers and staff that's on the bus if they felt like um a a student might might be going through an opium withdrawal of some sort. Um, and it also um includes students um administering these uh this this substance. The whole thing about this is it's totally optional for a district to include that. It's not something that they're saying you have to, but it's something that they're saying you can't if it passes. The only thing I would say is um I think that we have a policy in place around this.
I I think we do too, but I would want to um kind of dig in. I'll make a note to see.
And and so we want to take a look at that and we also, you know, we don't need a law to say, should bus drivers be applying that if appropriate. The thing about this is that if you do apply this drug, it doesn't hurt the kid if he isn't in an opium um withdrawal, whatever is going on. It doesn't hurt the body, it doesn't hurt a student if you apply it. So it's probably something we want to look at later on um this June when we look at policies again and kind of take a look. But we'll keep an eye on this uh bill to see if it passes. Any questions?
Would that be possibly attached to the degree? I'm I'm opinionated on this one. Well, after watching what Durango went through with their student protests and stuff and kids saying, well, I have friends that are, you know, overdosing this and that. I don't want to have, and and this may be kind of off to right side of things, but I would rather be promoting kids not be taking the drugs than having to having everybody carrying around overdose relief. I mean, I think that's, I think it sends the wrong message. I think it 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 allows for kids to just keep doing what they're doing because they know if they make a mistake, that somebody's gonna wrap me around and save their butt.
Well, and I think that goes back.
And and I'm not saying that to be harsh or cold.
Yeah.
And I and I do want to make sure that we don't have kids that are ODing and that we have problems, but I think it's it's it sets an example of an excuse that, yeah, we can still do this because someone's gonna be okay. And it's not, because I've talked to a lot of firefighters, a lot of paramedics that they can do, they'll do multiple of those nasal injections of naloxone depending on the overdose level and it's still lost people. Um, it's not a cure all end all and it shouldn't be thought of as being that way. It's it's something to do, it's it's an emergency response. I get that and I'm not against that. Don't get me wrong, but I just think it's it sets a precedent of tolerance rather than saying you guys shouldn't be doing this crap.
So so really it lies in, and I think that we have had some of these discussions. It lies in the policy around the practice of and also the policy and this is part of the strategic plan around the practice of the forefront, which meaning the education of why we don't ever want to have to get to that point. And that's, that is something that happens within our district. Um, and and we really, I think what you're saying, in fact, can repeat back is that should be the highlight, not a solution.
Right.
So the highlight is how are we educating our student population as to the dangers of multiple substances, right? Not just, I mean, I know vaping is one we talk about a lot. We talk about a lot of these things when uh survey data comes up. I don't, in my purview, I think we are very mindful of where we're at with that subject matter. I think it sounds like, is this particular legislation, Victor, is there a lot of that being worn out in really large districts where there they have to have a solution?
I think that it's coming out of the fact that there's many, many cases and there's a lot of use of opium. And it's killing adults and kids like quickly.
Yeah.
And so it's the major thing going on right now. Kids are using, um adults are using and um and it could be the first time they happen that, you know, it's sometimes, sometimes it's an accident. They don't even know.
Right.
Um, somebody gave them something and they took it and boom. So they're just trying to say, look, if there's a way to save our our students, let's have it available. That's all it's really trying to do here.
They're just trying to make it so they're just trying to make it a good Samaritan law where people are not going to be held liable and held, they will be held maybe accountable, not liable.
Yeah.
For for drug treatment.
Yeah.
And I I get that, I get that. I just think we need to have, like you say, an upfront understanding about it.
I think probably, I think that education is always important. So we need to continue to do the work around that. And then having some options around who carries this and who can give it.
Well, we've been a really thoughtful district, um just in my experience around trying to really be uh ahead of some of this stuff for our campus. I mean, we put baby detectors in bathrooms. We've tried to empower some of our administrators with the ability to address certain you know, practices that we would rather not have in within our our school system. So, but to continue to do that. And we are, we are doing, I mean, Mr. Cordray is is making that happen, so.
I think I have like thirty seconds or something.
But you just added two more minutes. Look at how that works when it's in.
Um, House Bill twenty four one oh thirty nine is what is is a non-legal name change. And basically what this is, is that if this bill passes, they're basically saying that students can say to staff or whatever that they want to be named, this versus that. And um and um and so, so Joe can be called Sally next week. So that's a lot of discussion, a lot of public input about this uh bill because um it um there's a lot of concern around. So like, you know, a lot of districts have things in place that support students that you know, um um that might feel that way. And so they're trying to support them that way. So a lot of the complaints have been local control around this particular deal because they don't want the state to come in and say, this is what you you need to do.
I don't want our teachers to be held liable. Yeah, something like that.
Well, that's that's that whole discussion, what happens if you make a mistake. And what they're saying basically, they're saying that if you don't do that to students, then you can um be sued through civil rights.
And that's what I have a problem with.
That's basically what they're saying in this bill.
And and it'd be one thing if the parents made that mandate to the school rather than the students saying it. It would make a difference. It's not in the, that's not in the writing of the rule right now.
It isn't in the writing of the rule.
I know, I've read it.
But so, and again, this is a, this is something that's up for um consideration. It is, it is, it is not passed.
Yeah, all the, all of these bills I'm talking about have not passed. They're just bills I'm I'm giving you a heads up on. And we'll follow up on the ones that do pass or if they pass. If they don't pass it, but I will follow up again on it. But I just want you to be aware, it's it's something that is um that Casby does not support at this point. Only because of the ramifications and the local control issue. And then the last one um that I want to share with you guys is um Senate Bill twenty four zero forty nine, content materials and library and the libraries. Um, the bill establishes a process by which students, parents, and members of the community may object to library resources. That's what this bill is basically about. Again, it's one of those bills that people are upset about because a lot of districts have policies and procedures in place already um about what happens if if there's a complaint about a book or books. And this is not just our library in our schools, but it's public libraries. And they they're putting a process in place that they expect everybody to follow. And why are they doing that? Because there are some a few districts that don't have policies in place and there's been complaints. And so, you know, they're putting this, they're trying to pass this and people are upset because again, it's a local control issue. People, you know, many of the districts that I've been sitting on the committee with have basically said, we all have this process in place already. We don't need the state to come in and tell us how it should work. Um, so a heads up, it's um, it's just a heads up.
Also not supported by Casby.
This is not, yeah, this is not passed, but it's going through the house right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Figaroa. Roger, do you have a Bozies update for us?
We did, we actually did have a meeting. Um, we had a meeting February fourteenth, um through Durango. The main thing was they went through the audit. Um, everything looks good for the Bozies books, uh which are very complicated. Um Also, we are working on a new um executive director evaluation tool because they've changed the um, the executive director's job description. Um, so the rise came in and it's a whole different job description than what they have before. So now we're changing the um evaluation tool. Uh, then the main thing I kind of wanted to go over with you guys today is not just that we know that Bozies works with their ESS department and their air, our AU. They also do a whole bunch of professional development. So I printed out, this is just their calendar of what they have so far. Um, starts from last July and what they did. And it's all the different districts that they do this for. If there are specific ones that they do for say Bayfield or Pagosa or for us, it's all in here. So it's four pages, um from front to back. But just to kind of, I mean, I'm not gonna go over all of them, but just so you can kind of see all the professional development that they have. And that is available for our staff, um our teachers, our administrators. Most of this is from grants that they get. Um, a lot of those grants we already have, we're already working on in the school. But just to kind of give another kind of side of what Bozies does offer for us for all of our different schools. And I have not a meeting next month. Um, it's just a work session, so, okay, so I will not have anything for next month. And that's all.
Thank you. Any questions?
Or is there anything you all want me to bring up in the meeting? So then again, this won't be totally cut.
See if they can find more specialized teachers for less money.
Okay, um, Mr. Cordray, um, should we consider the early graduation gen discussion first? So as to not keep.
That'd be great.
Me waiting. Um, it's it's kind of your show, but she's first on the discussion items. Can we move?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so uh, I'll turn over to you.
So as you guys know, I'm Tiffany Assafore. Um, I am just bringing early graduation procedure to your attention. Um, this year we had an increase of early graduates just for many different reasons. Um, so we wanted to put something in place just so that parents and students can think about their decisions a little thorough, more thoroughly for that. Um, so Mr. Cordray and I have talked about a couple of different things and um, basically when a student wants to graduate early, it is in our student and parent handbook that they have the option of that. Um, a lot of kids don't take advantage of that. We don't encourage it. We like for them to stay here if they can, but there's certain situations for certain kids that it benefits for them. Um, so in your packets, I believe you have this early graduation um request. So basically, it's just a couple of questions to have them sit at home with their parents, discuss and kind of make a plan of how that early graduation will affect them. And then on the back, it's kind of for my reference to make sure they've met graduation requirements. And then for administration, um myself, Ed and we always just discuss with Mr. Cordray. But um Ed and myself will be the ones to approve to make sure that we have everything in place. So um we had five this year graduate at semester. We do have one that will graduate a full year early. Um yes.
Wow.
So in the last one, last year we had one as well. So it it's not typical, but it can it can be the norm. It just depends on where they stand with credits and what their future goals are. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Um, so Mr. Cordray, does this or or this, that's what I maybe want to be the answer of both. Does this event, when you have students, especially five students, leave early? How does that impact the district from the the fall, for the following semester? I mean, obviously it means there's five more places for for kids to sit in classrooms, but does it impact us financially? Is there any really significant impact that we should be mindful of for those leaving? I did see they still get to they still get to participate in graduation ceremonies.
Yes, um, on graduation, they're still on all my corresponding emails for any seniors. They're still included with anything. They just are not required to be here.
There's no requirement.
And they did get a diploma issued at semester so that, um, if they wanted to continue with college, they could enroll if they wanted to right away. They could start college early.
Okay.
Or if they wanted to go into a workforce or military that required a graduation date, they have it. But as far as the financial impact, um, they are counted on October count. And it was something that I reached out to our auditor. Um, although we've had a full year graduation, we've not really had semester graduations. Um, so I just wanted to confirm that and it didn't seem like there was any, anything that would impact us financially because it's all reported in October count, which they're here during that time, so.
Do you know of, of these students, how many of them are going right into the workforce? Or do you know anything about their pathway?
I, well, yes, just from the form, um, three of them were for sure going into the workforce. But out of those three that I'm referencing, one of them is going to go into college in August, but wanted to save money before they actually went to the program. Um, the other two, they wanted to take a gap year and this allowed them to maybe shorten that time because of financials, they wanted to work. So kind of the same situation, work, get some more money under the belt and then go into college.
Okay. Interesting.
Does Chesa have anything with activities or athletics?
So, and it's stated on the form, so once they graduate, they forfeit eligibility for athletics. So that's one of the things we have, that conversation. Because I've had kids in the past, I want to graduate very, I'm like, well, no. Because you do track and basketball and they're like, oh, okay, you're right. So those are conversations that we have. Um, they would definitely not want to graduate early if they had, if they're participating in athletics. They would then, they forfeit that, so.
Do you think they'll come back and walk?
Um, I, I believe four out of the five will. Um, the one student that wants to graduate early, I, I don't, I don't think he wants to. He, he told me he had some stuff with his grandma. He wanted to go visit her, so, um, and I don't believe his brother walked during graduation either. So it's just personal preference, but I believe they will. They were excited, they felt accomplished. Um, like I said, it's all a different path for each of us and if we can, I don't know, meet their needs to the best ability, I think that that's great. And I, I think there's still, like, I still have a couple of them coming in and asking questions about scholarships or, um, just staying involved. So with, I, they're not completely disconnected, so.
That was kind of the basis behind my question, just to kind of figure out that, their pathway, right?
Yeah.
And whether or not they would.
And I think most parents, even if they're graduating that semester, they still want to see their kid walk. So I think they're going to encourage that. Some people, that doesn't matter to them. Um, even when they graduate with the standard time, they still don't care to graduate or walk. Sorry, not graduate, but walk.
Victor, Gray, any questions?
Um, really happy to see it. It's got, it's got balanced, um, application, gets some good options.
Okay, great. Hey, thanks for coming in and sharing.
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cordray, well, thanks back to you and all of your lovely reporting. And, uh, I guess you get to take up the role of business manager this evening, too.
Yes, I shall be for that. So just a few things on the superintendent report. On March eighth, this is a reminder for the board. We've been in contact with NWA and they're, they're, um, prepped and ready to train the board on NWA maps so that the, the board, as it sets district goals, has an understanding of what and how NWA measures, what type of tests those are and, and how they're normed throughout the country. So that training will be online, it'll be in this room or from your own location. I'm sure you'll, your board president will determine how that is to roll out for the board. But that is Friday, March eighth, from eleven AM to twelve PM. And we are making it.
They're recording it.
Sorry, Mr. Hunter.
Recording it.
We also, it, it is an opportunity. What, pardon?
I just said I have doctor's appointments that day.
But we're going to record it and call me on this with you guys. I didn't go live last year. I, I watched the recording.
I did too.
I probably will watch the recording this year. Be, um, just giving you a warning because I had to stop myself, look at the reports, go back, kind of figure it out, like, kind of follow along, right? And it's, it's complicated and it goes fast. And if you're not an educator, which I have no, that's not my wheelhouse.
Right.
It took me a bit of go back, go back, go back. And then I was, you know, assessing other reporting, um, uh, uh, grades and so forth. So, uh, recording it is vital. So if you can't make it, it's okay, you'll still be able to learn it. We have to know it in order to do our work effectively as a board for the strategic plan and those, um, objectives that relate to student achievement and growth.
Yeah, as, as a school district.
We have to.
We, we are heavily invested in NWA maps. And so it's really important that, that the board has a good understanding. And in addition, um, staff will, will be, will have the option to observe the, the training also. It's really a board training, but, but staff will be there, will have the option to, to watch the training also just so that they have an understanding of what the board is learning. That way we, we stay united as a Mankas School District.
And it's the December eleventh.
Eleven, twelve on March eighth. And then as I move on, move further down my, my report, uh, last week, I was in, uh, Loveland for the annual case winter leadership conference. I was able to attend some breakout sessions about EPK and also what other school districts are doing. One that was interesting was Montrose School District is evaluating some different staffing models. And so, and they're also, uh, where they're going to implement a different staffing model is also an elementary school that's adopting PBL as their primary instructional strategy. So, uh, we will be visiting them to see how that rolls out and also to provide support as a, as a PBL school district. There was also a lot of good classes around finance and also some of the items that Mr. Figueroa will mention from the legislative update. On April twelfth, we're going to talk about this a little bit later in the agenda, but this will be a meeting between the board and staff, kind of a, um, a board cafe where we'll provide a, a light lunch for staff and we'll be able to discuss school district goals, school district initiatives and priorities. It's a great way for the board and staff to spend time together and discuss the important stuff so that we remain united as a, as a team of Mankas School Districts.
Thought we'd change that to a breakfast.
We did, we did. What time did I just say?
You said lunch.
I was completely wrong, from eight in the morning to nine in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Tim.
April twelfth.
April twelfth.
Yeah, and it's going to be breakfast.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that. Uh, and then also, uh, the boys and girls basketball teams have one district and they'll be starting regional play Friday and Saturday. An incredible accomplishment for, for our varsity basketball teams. That should be really fun, so.
We're hosting, right?
Yes, we're hosting.
Boys and girls.
Boys and girls. So Friday, Friday games and then Saturday games for the championship. Next, I'm sorry, this Wednesday, we're going to have about ten guests on campus. Uh, Mankas School District is, is hosting the regional superintendent monthly meeting. So they'll be in this room, all the superintendent, as well as the BOSI's leadership for the monthly meeting for superintendents from eight AM till twelve PM. And then I would just like to conclude with, it was really great to have those three students here to share with us their success with the town. And I think it really speaks to the quality of town leadership and how we've really grown between the town and the school district with building partnerships. And, um, Ms. Alvarez, their town administrator, has just done a terrific job with that as well as, uh, Mr. Armstrong and their town economic development coordinator, director, uh, has been very active with our school district. So we're just fortunate that we're, we're building a nice, strong, united Mankas community. And then President, that's my report. And we'll, we'll ask, um, Ms. Miller to update us in email on important things for finance.
Okay, perfect. Um, that was my next question is whether or not we will get that update. So she'll do that just the other day. I'm looking for this, I don't know. Um, I spent the day on campus today, so there's a lot in my mind. But one of the things I wanted to highlight is that we have, um, three teachers in the elementary, Mrs. Gregerson, uh, Mrs. Small, and uh, maybe Mrs. Russell that are hosting the students that are observing. Can you just mention that, please?
Sure.
That's really pretty cool.
Oh, it's pretty exciting. So PBC, which is Public Education Business Coalition, uh, they do our, the alternative licensure program in our region. Our teachers are, you know, are exemplary, exemplary in, in their professional practice. So their, uh, teacher candidates, the ones that are learning to be full-time professional teachers are going to be at our school district this week to watch how we do it. Wednesday, to watch how we do it, which is really, uh, really cool. It's really nice, uh, to be recognized as that way. But it's also great to contribute back to, to the industry. And so kudos to the, to the entire elementary school staff and leadership there for, for being willing to, to be the example for these aspiring teachers.
I think it really speaks to the quality of our educators that others are looking to bring three or four students into their classrooms just to watch them and learn from them. And, um, I personally, uh, was pretty proud of, of our elementary staff kind of being, being, uh, elevated to that place. And we don't always have the, we don't always have the time to, to highlight that, so, um, important. Okay, uh, we are going to head into our discussion items. Um, we've got, um, we already did our early graduation and, uh, there's a curriculum review cycle is, um, I think one of those, uh, discussion items that we should at least have some framework around. And I know you've been working hard on that, Mr. Cordray, if you would like to present so that we can. President, should we continue with that? I guess we have, um, a SRO here, should we talk about those? So you can secure. Mr. Greenly?
Uh, sorry, did not accept.
Do you want to go home? Do you want to go home?
I, I, I would be glad to be.
I think you have a cot in the back.
It's only been a twelve-hour day.
Of course, yeah, no, let's absolutely do that. And, uh, if you're ready, I would say.
Yes.
Able, sorry to shift gears on you, sorry. No, you're good, thanks for pointing it out. I'm just going down my list.
I'm willing to, she's not going to want to sit here all night.
You might, you might.
Share one resource that didn't make it into your packets.
I feel like I've seen this before in twenty twenty-three.
And then I, I believe, um, you guys did receive kind of, um, it would have been labeled, more of a twelve-month plan, but then it's been, it, it has been condensed. And so that's, I think, what I wanted to, um, kind of share with you, um, the, the process and, and the plan that we're looking at as, uh, we're, we're considering the possibility and looking at what an SRO would look like for Mankas School District. And so it's going to say month one, two, month three, four, but all of that is actually going to be condensed into, I'm on the second page of that, into that shorter calendar and I'll hit that here in just a second. Um, but some of the steps that we're looking at is, is first looking to assess our current situation. And that's been an ongoing process that we're doing, um, internally. Um, we, we've also, um, with Marshall Goodall, those have been conversations him and I have had as well as he's looking from the outside and from the law enforcement perspective of, um, what our safety mes, measures are, what our potential vulnerabilities are. Um, and then we continue to evaluate our, uh, current emergency response plans. And then along with that, we're looking, we, we have the Safety and Security Advisory Committee that we had some meetings with, um, but we're, we're looking to kind of, um, update that committee, um, into where it'll be kind of more focused just on the SRO, um, process right now. And that is the paper that I shared with everybody. That is, um, the proposed email that I would be sending out to staff and community members, uh, asking them to join us in that process. We'd be looking at them, um, helping to conduct town hall meetings, um, uh, working on the memorandum of understanding, um, establishing what the protocols would be for the SR pro, um, program. Um, and so we're, we're encouraging, wanting to have a diverse group of individuals with different perspectives, um, and different thoughts on what, uh, an SRO in Mankas would look like. Um, to continue, uh, what we want to do through these, these next, um, few months is, is to have those town hall meetings where, where we invite, um, community to come and share their concerns, um, share their thoughts and, and kind of encourage that open dialogue, um, to receive feedback from our community. Uh, we will be looking at, um, sending surveys out to, uh, parents, our staff, um, to get feedback that way as well. And then, uh, look to use our social media and our website, um, as, as a resource to share information um, on the process and where we're at, both with our safety and with the SRO program. Um, and then, as I said, this, this email that's proposed to send out would be kind of for establishing that SRO task force, um, that would help us to, to research, recommend best practices, establish those protocols for our SR program, um, and then also help with the MOU. And I'd also like to state with the MOU, um, Todd is, Mr. Cordray's done quite a bit of work on that already, um, with input from Marshall Goodall. And then we've also sent it to both the district attorney and to the town's attorney. And they're giving their input on, on that document as well at this time. Another part of what that task force will do would be to consult with trauma-informed experts, um, in our, in our area, in surrounding area to get their feedback on, um, what are best practices for an SRO, um, around, around that as well. And, uh, right, right now, I mean, we have been there to develop a funding strategy, um, as of right now, through the talks that we've had, um, that the town is looking to support this program. Um, we'll want to continue looking at ways to where we can, um, extend it and keep it if it's in place. But, uh, right now the town is looking to carry the majority of that, um, financial, the finances for this program. And then we'll kind of, I'll, if you guys have jumped to that, that third page where that calendar is and I'll kind of go through, um, what that's going to look like as it's been condensed. Uh, we, we're meeting right now, this is the board update on the, on the twenty-sixth of February. That first February staff meeting, that's going to be moved into March, um, because it just, um, I, I didn't make that timeline and so I'll be meeting with them during a staff PD day in March, um, to kind of share where we're at. Uh, we have had, um, two meetings with the town marshal already, um, discussing what this might be. Uh, we have had, um, two meetings with the town marshal already, um, discussing what this might look like. Discussing the, the MOU. But then we will be looking to have, uh, our first community meeting in February or in March. Um, we'll be looking to have another one in April, April. Um, and then meeting with the staff again as we're getting to the end of the school year. Followed by another community meeting in June and, um, at this time looking to. Uh, have a final meeting in August with staff and with, um, the possible new SRO to. Unroll the, the SR, SRO program for the Mangus School District. The, the Mangus Marshals Office, they have identified an individual. Uh, that they feel is a great fit for this position already, um. And we, in working with them, have been finding ways for him to be on campus quite a bit to where. He is a resource to us right now, but then also building relationships with our staff. And with our students and then just learning more about our campus and, um, how it operates on a day-to-day basis. But he's been, he's been in several different meetings with us where, um, he's been a valuable resource already. Acting as just the deputy, uh, for Mangus, but he's been kind of stationed out of, um, our, our schools here for the last couple of weeks. And also here in the mornings and in the afternoons, helping us with traffic, uh, which is, I, I believe we, we've seen, um. A difference in that already, just with him being, being here, um, and visible every morning and every afternoon, so. Todd, would you like to jump in? Anything you would like to share or?
You bet. So just along with that, the, the town has allocated, uh. Deputy Sheriff Minor, uh, to be in this role. And so he's already dedicating, you know, like forty hours a week to, to our campus. For the safety and security of our campus, which is really great. As we develop this MOU, that's really going to speak to how this program will look going forward. And so the MOU is very thoughtful. It's, it's really deep and it comes from best practice, which we learned, which we really got. The majority of this MOU from another school district, from a session that we attended at Casby. And at Thompson School District and it was remarkable how closely aligned with our values also. And so I think we'll be looking to continue to, to develop this, get community input. Build that task force of diverse thinkers and different ideologies so that we can develop a process. So that in a perfect world in August, we're able to then have a meeting with staff and discuss duties and expectations. And so our staff will know what the MOU, what the SRO does as described in this MOU.
So the MOU will go into effect a- after review going forward from August forward.
Yes, the MOU would start in August and it would be after input from. Staff, community and the board to make sure that we have, that we're all on board and really feel comfortable. That this is the right way to move forward. And so I feel like that's really important. The other aspect which we have to invest some time and energy in is, is thinking about, well, what's the relationship? Once we've established the MOU with the other two, one, with, with this county law enforcement agency, the sheriff's office. As well as the city of Cortez, knowing that we have twenty-two percent of our kids that. That are out of district kids. Yeah, that's still be the county, but building those relationships also. So that's all part of, that will take us really from now through till August. And so the idea is a very robust conversation and also being able to, to build consensus along the way. We're in a very advantageous position that the town has found this to be such a value to. To the community that they've already are, are absorbing the cost of this, this employee. Who's dedicating the vast majority of his time for the benefit of the safety and security of, of our students and staff. So I just, the question.
Who wants to go first?
I'm sorry, I need to finish this because I'm here and we're going through the process. Um, but then when August comes, it sounds like we're hiring or we're, we're going to actually have it in place. What is the exact timeline on this?
So ideally, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Okay, so ideally at the beginning of August, then the board and the town board both feel comfortable. And, and we will execute the MOU. And so by the time kids, kids come back in, in the fall. We will have an SR, an SRO on campus.
Okay.
So, so basically the, the whole front part, the whole, you know, setting up the interview and everything, we don't do any of that because they already hired, hired somebody.
And it's a town employee.
It is. So we now just have to get this committee going, which it looks like you want to have everything back by the fourth. So by next week. When, once the email goes out to have about a week.
Pretty quick to where, yeah, where, where.
So we can get the first meetings going, um, so we have a couple of town hall meetings or a couple of, you know, open meetings. Um, with the community and the staff throughout the spring and then implement by August.
So, and Travis, you might have this in place, but you might have this on here. I, I've read it, but I didn't see it necessarily. It'd just be nice to say, look, if, if August is the point where that's going to happen. That means that the, our board needs to meet again. I mean, we need to meet July like we always do. And look at all the information that you have gathered and that should be somewhere in here. So that we can be prepared to know, like I want to know what has the community said, what has staff said? What, what, what has kind of gone on with that whole discussion? And it'd just be nice to have it as part of the agenda here because it's confusing to say that we're going to approve it. Without saying we're going to meet to discuss it.
And the way that the MOU is written, and I want to be very mindful of this, it is, and I understand it's a draft, so we do have to keep that in mind. Um, and I understand we're on, we're on kind of a different platform because work is being done. Through a, uh, or, um, through the town in which, you know, they're raising their hand to come to the table in ways that we need them to come to the table. So this is a give and take, let's just be honest here. But the way the MOU is written is that we, it would be more of a collaborative process to interview. Find committee, interview, hire, training, et cetera. I understand where we're at and why in the future, if this is executed, it needs to happen that way. As much as possible. And number two, and this is a large concern of mine. I would like to be assured in some fashion, and I'm sure that comes about from your committee. That the appropriate training, which is discussed in the, in the MOU, is onboarded and completed. And everything's in place before that person is regularly on our campus. Because let's be honest, the person is on our campus today, just not in the same capacity. And, and we've had the, the, the presence of the officers on campus for a long time. So that's not, that is nothing that's unusual or new. What's new is that we are sophisticating that presence through the proper training as it integrates within a school district. The final thing I will say is that trauma-informed is something that is greatly discussed in this MOU. And I would highly encourage that we make sure that the town is also, uh. Communicating with Dodi, undergoing the same, that, that we're utilizing the same funnel of source, right, on trauma-informed. And we're not, uh, struggling against one another. And that's going to take some coordination. Uh, and certainly can be talked about in our linkage meeting if need be. The MOU gives me comfort. I just wish that this would have been. A year ago that we were looking at it, but I get it. I understand the timelines. I just, it's good. It'd have been better if we could have backed it up some time. That's all.
Can I just add one other thing to, or two comments that Emily just shared? So I know that in the MOU, you have at the end, um. That input from the school district around evaluation. And I really want you guys to really take a look at that. And make sure that, um, it is as tight as possible as it relates to what kind of input and what influence. I know that this employee is not our employee. And that's, that, you know, that can, my experience with SROs is that causes sometimes some issues. So I really urge you to look at the relationship, um, in, in the MOU around. What kind of, um, uh, impact you have on the evaluation of this SRO? Because if it works great, it's going to work great. But when it doesn't work great because there's a disagreement about how something was handled or something was, you know, done. Um, it doesn't work great. So I just, I think the, 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 the input is pretty critical. As it relates to what the school district has influenced over this particular employee that's not our employee. Yeah.
I will just, I'm sorry, just, um, to, there, there already has been some of the training that has been completed. And, and I can't speak to what specific, but I know that there, there has been some of the training that we're going to ask for already completed. And then there is additional training that, that Deputy Minor is already registered to attend. Um, leading up to that. So I do understand where, I mean, this is kind of unique where it's, it's beginning and he's in. On campus in one capacity, uh.
It's like innovative status. It's almost like we are doing innovative status in the role of an SRO, sort of. Uh, I would love to suggest that he go spend a couple of days with the gallop and Doris. She was tremendous, but I don't know if he could cross those lines, but, but that's a best practice, right?
And he actually, I mean, he actually knows, um, Doris well. Um, he, I, I believe has a kid that is a student in Doris. And so, um, I think there's, there is a relationship there.
Good.
Um, and he, he is, I, I will, just to kind of add to that conversation, when we had the benefit for the Peliki family. Um, from Doris, that, that was initiated, uh, by Deputy Minor, um, to how we could. Step in and support, just trying to bring all of our communities together, um, in a time of need. So just, just to speak to a little bit of his character, um.
And then too, there is a really good language in here around data, data collection and data evaluation, which I think is, is really important. And then I would encourage that it would be really helpful for Mr. Greenlee and myself. Uh, for, for you all to spend as much time on that MOU as you have available to you. And provide input for us because as the governing authority, it'd be really helpful. To make sure that that MOU, which will be government-to-government MOU, to, to really have your. Your, your fingerprints and your insights and your wisdom. It would be helpful for us as we, as we continue to, to move forward. And then in addition, if you have people that you think voices would be really valuable to the process, so we have a well, well-rounded task force. As we really move through the next, you know, seven or eight months here, you know, we please encourage them to, to reach out to Mr. Greenlee. Uh, to, to participate. Whoever raises their hand will be welcome into this committee. It's not, it's, it's inclusive by nature as opposed to exclusive in any way.
Have we shared this with DAC?
No, this is, this is only for the board's eyes right now. It's for, and then, uh. Once, once we move, uh, through tonight, then, then we'll be at a point to really feel like. We have the endorsement of the board to continue with this process.
My thought would be make sure that you're personally reaching out to DAC because they are those people that are showing up. It's an easier ask, right? And they have a little bit more insight into the functionality of the district. Second thing I will ask is, is our attorney going to review the MOU?
He already has.
He already has.
Yeah, and he's already.
This that you presented is his, after his review. I'd like to see the draft after his review.
Yeah, there, there, this, this actually, they've been, it's been active, so there could be changes.
I would like to see that.
Yes, for sure.
I want to review too.
Okay, cool. There, cool, no problem.
Okay, I'll follow up with you so that we can share that.
Yeah, we'll share that with the board.
Travis, this is the email. It's going to go out public with your contact information.
Yeah, yeah. And it will be with my, with my signature. And, but I will, I'll make sure that's included, yes.
So people who expressed interest.
Yeah, I, good. So what, what we're really, um, what you're wanting from us, Mr. Cordray, is the ability to. Give you, uh, to move forward. You want our.
Yeah, this would be a point, this could be one of the points in the process where the board could say, heck no, we're done. This isn't right for Mangus School District. We want a hard stop here. And then that, that is a possibility that, that, and then, because if the board is resolute on that point. Then there wouldn't make sense to, to add conflict to, to the community, if, if that's not a possibility. But if it, if the board feels like you'd like to learn more and you're, and you feel supportive of what you've learned so far. Then, then this is your point to say, yeah, continue, continue to collect information, continue to get feedback. And then, because we know we're going to have a chance to, to, to look at it in the end.
Okay, uh, I think we should just go around the table and then I'm assuming you may need a motion to move forward.
I don't think so.
Input from everyone as the president, give a directive to our superintendent to follow through. I have no problem with this. I think with the, you know, forming the Citizens Committee and making this move forward. I'm all in favor of it and I would suggest that we give a directive to our superintendent to follow through with that.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I like the idea of that, or the directive that there should be a lot of, uh, trauma-informed care. Involved in that. I know it's, it's a really big thing, um, within the community, especially. With the meetings that I've been partying to with, um, Mangus United, um, there's a real big push for that. I just want to make sure that that is not, um. A secondary thing, I want to be a primary concern that, you know, that that resource is available in a positive way. That we're, we're creating an environment where, where, uh, it's accepted not as a. I don't know. Just that, that it's a necessary part of our, our community and not.
Keeping it on the forefront.
Yeah.
Once this committee is formed, maybe Dodi ought to address that committee before your committee meetings.
Well, we need to connect the dots, right? And, and then have some presence as well. Victor?
Um, yeah, I, 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 I am in support of this. Um, I, I just want to make sure that our community, that our staff, and our, just everybody is in support of it. If there is, if there is, um, concerns about, um, this, then we need to hear that too. And we need to understand what is that? Is that a small percentage? Is that, you know, I, I just want to see some data around what that really is about. I assume my community is supportive, but I don't know that.
Okay, well, to piggyback off of that, I think, um, definitely, you know, as of right now, I think it's, it's a really good thing. I think you, you know, you did a good job writing all this up. I think your timeline looks good. I do think that we need to add this. Um, to June or July, because I haven't done one of those yet. Um, and I think maybe to have the deputy come in and, and talk with us at that time. Um, I would like to meet them.
To piggyback on top of that, I will say that, just to highlight, Mr. Cordray. Um, I think what, what everyone is saying, I'm also in support of this. So you have a board. Uh, unanimous board support moving forward with the quanti- quantifying conditions that trauma-informed. Remain at the forefront of this thought process to be a unified trauma-informed practice and. Presentation or training of source, the source of the trauma-informed practice has to, has to remain solid. Um, and that will take some follow-up because we have our own follow-up for trauma-informed to do within our own district. Um, the training is of ultimate importance and being assured that that training is. The training is of ultimate importance and being assured that that training is correct. The MOU review along with attorney review and that feedback. And then following that MOU to the T in the future as to be ahead of this instead of feeling as though, because I very much feel as though I'm behind it. I don't know that that was the intention, but it, but it, you know, I know things happen, but but that is a feel. For that reason, to echo Rachel's ask, I would ask that we meet this person who is on our campus. The earlier the better. I do not want to wait until July. I would like to have this person in next month, if at all possible, because this person is already interacting with our staff and students and has a presence on campus. I was on campus all day today. I, I wouldn't have known had he been playing close if I passed him. I try very hard, but we're not all here every day. So I would love to have a sense, I think it would help me as a parent and a board member to have a sense of comfort in knowing who this person is, considering the position that he is in, okay? And that, I think, leads to the feedback as well. And so, you know, not that I'm asking for something to be largely outside of this committee because this is where the work is to be done. If someone has a, a specific ask or wants to have continual voice, this committee is where they need to put those efforts, not at the board meeting next month. The, the, the ask to meet this person, and maybe we should do it during work session, is really just in order to help us, right?
Yeah.
The work from the community is within this, this committee itself. And the earlier that can go out, the better, so that you can get a proper number of, of people to represent on that committee. That committee, commu- community voice on the committee, that's a lot in one sentence, by the way, is imperative, right? Because you have to have all walks of this town to be able to say, this is where I have concerns, this is how I feel, this is how, you know, you, you need those voices, right? Fairly represented. So that, that would, in summary, I believe, be the ask and the direction of the board. Is, did I miss anything, anybody? I meant to be corrected. Good. Thank you, Travis. I know you've been working on this for a very long time. The reason I said I feel like I've seen this before is because we did have a committee in advance of this committee.
We had the advisory committee that I met with, yes.
We've already spent a, almost a year through committee advisement. So that's to be noted that this has not been taken lightly.
No.
This is not a decision or a process that the district has rushed into. And it, it is something that I feel as though personally, I, I have witnessed through our CASB attendance, through conversation with administrators, that the district has been very mindful about using best practice, looking at surrounding districts, talking to Doris, talking to other districts in the state. We've done our work, but there's more to do.
Yes.
Okay.
Travis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sid.
All right. Now we can go curriculum review.
Okay. So as you look at the, you have a document in front of you, which is five page, well, so six.
It's long.
Yes, so it's.
There's not even any pictures.
No, it's really broken into three parts. So I want to, there's the process part, which is really page one, two, three, and then, and four. And then page five is the schedule, and that's the second part. And then page six is the school district policy. So we have those three parts. We have the process part, the schedule part, and the school district policy part. In the curriculum review cycle, this is a procedure that was first initiated last spring at the, at the desire of the Board of Education to say, well, how do we put together a process so that we review curriculum on a scheduled basis for a variety of really positive outcomes? One positive outcome is so that we know our students are getting the most recent, up-to-date and effective curriculum, so that the school district can, can align align financial resources to pay for new implementation of curriculum. And so that we do it in a way that's thorough and comprehensive. And so the curriculum review cycle then was developed. And and former board member Katie Katie Wolfie was very instrumental in providing resources to help with this development. So we, in the first part, we have the process. The process is broken into three phases. Phase one, which is the consideration of new curriculum. Phase two is the implementation of new curriculum. And phase three is the monitoring of existing curriculum. Phase one and phase two are two years each in length. And phase three is three years of monitoring our curriculum. So as we move to the second part of this process, that's the schedule, I would ask the board to look at the schedule, which is really on page five. And as you do that, you'll see that math is to be implemented in school year twenty-five, twenty-six. So that's not next school year, that's the school year after. So right now, the schools are in the process of educating their, their math curriculum task force. And those are gonna be made up in accordance with the policy, which the school board passed last spring. And they're in the process of, of seeking out curriculum that would meet its needs. And we would be aligning math curriculum throughout the district. So we have the vertical alignment we want come school year twenty-five, twenty-six. That, that's gonna be happening, that's has started, and that's gonna continue for the next twelve months. Come January, that task force will come to the board and say, here's our finding, here's the feedback from staff, here's the feedback from the community, here's the feedback from parents, and we're looking at adoption of a new curriculum. And so come January and February of next year, this board then will receive the information it needs to fulfill its obligation under the policy IG, the curriculum adoption policy. At that point, the board will say thumbs up or thumbs down. And if they say thumbs up, then you're in a position, then the school district's in a position to start the financial process to buy the resources in advance so we could do professional development spring, summer, prior to implementation interval. And so those are the three pieces, and and that's how the process works. And we're also, now to get to the left, we're also working at building the instructional review cycle as well, so that we, we have a, a system for what we do as we're kind of building our academic, our academic processes for the school district. You know, revitalizing them or putting to place new processes that are consistent with our MTSS strategies that we're working so diligently on as a school district. So I bring this before you now, just as a way of letting you know where we are from an administrative perspective with the curriculum review process, giving you all a heads up as to when you'll be needing to make decisions, which is next January. And also seeking your input, because this would be a good time to make changes if changes need to happen, that being that we have time to, to iterate if necessary.
I have one thing to offer as a board member who went through the most recent curriculum implementation at the elementary level, which unfortunately applied across the board, many grade levels. So it was gigantic. The more time you can give us, along with the idea of who that implementation is made up from, I, I, I would help us, I think tremendously as a board, to understand the players behind all of the vast amounts of work that goes into what is finally, you have to remember, there's tons of work that bubbles up before it's presented to the board. I would love to, to be a little, have a little insight into what, what that exactly is comprised of. Not that I want to review options, but I would like to know the players. And I would like personally to have as much time as possible, then making the decision for the financial, okay? And feeling as though we're making a sound decision to support the curriculum needs of our students, it, it, it will be easier for myself as board member. That, that would be my feedback directly. And and Victor, I would ask, because you and I did go through that together, that maybe you perhaps will find next on how you feel about this.
Yeah, I, I just want some clarification. Todd, you, you said something, and maybe I heard it wrong. But you said phase one is two years, phase two is two years. But when I look at this phase one, it's one to two years. I'm just thinking about the curriculum committee work is one dash two, two years. And then phase, year three, that says implementation of curriculum revision. So is that, is phase two one year or is it two years?
Thank you for that clarity. That, it's two. And two, two, so I'll update that graphic. Okay.
My, my, my other question, I guess. Todd is, is, can you share a little bit about how the two years for each phase came up? Like, how did you decide two years was needed? Why not one year to, to start from the beginning with your curriculum committee, get feedback from staff, go out to the community, get feedback from the community, bring, get feedback, you know, whatever else has to happen in phase one and one?
Yeah.
And then bring it to the board for review about all the data spots, all the feedback you got about a particular curriculum. How did, how did it come up to two years? Why did, why was two years chosen, I guess?
Yeah, I, for the, for the curriculum committee work or, or for the implementation?
Oh, I would say.
You know, I tell you what, it's, it's, we don't know. I don't know.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's a new process. And so looking at two years of evaluation before we go into implementation just seemed really appropriately prudent.
Okay.
To take that process appropriately slow and to make sure that we're garnering the feedback from, from all stakeholders.
So is it possible that after you do this once or twice, that it could turn to one year?
Oh, I, I, I think so. I think iterations is, is what make policy and procedure effective. So as we go through this process, if we find ways that, that make more sense, I, I would hope that we would iterate.
So the process is not written in policy, the policy oversees the process.
Right.
So we can, Evan, and hope we do, right?
The procedure, yeah, the procedure is administrative. And, and, and because it's administrative, it is more flexible.
Right. And I like, like Emily, we had things backwards when we did this last time, and it made things confusing. So it's a battle process. I just have not, I've not been used to seeing two years for phase one and phase two to, to then be implemented into phase three. I just haven't seen it in two years. But, not being said, it may be better to go slow before we go fast. And I'm okay with that, but I'll probably ask the same question. What have we learned from, you know, from this process? The only other thing I would ask is, is in middle school, you have math and high school has math. What, what, I mean, what were the thoughts around, here's elementary during the curriculum in math? What, was there any connection to middle school and high school doing it at the same time? Or was it more a financial decision or?
I, I think it's first and foremost aligned that way.
Yeah.
We, it was created to align that way so that we have vertical alignment to our curriculum
Right.
to, to best align with the Colorado academics.
But you don't see that happening at the same time.
Those ones are.
They, they're all aligned.
So, so, okay, so I'm gonna go to the schedule, because maybe I'm confused. I see that K, I see grades five K math is in stage one committee work. But I don't see that when I look at math and six to eight. Or I don't see that in math and nine to twelve.
Only consideration work or the?
Like.
Are you looking at this map, this, this schedule?
We're trying to.
It's sideways, that's where I wanted to leave this.
I wasn't looking like that, I was looking at this.
The.
Oh.
That's just the example of the schedule.
Go down.
Oh, that's just the example of the schedule.
Because if you look at the next one, the one thing that I'm looking at is year twenty-six, twenty-seven is screwed.
Is it?
Because they're all on there except for the math ones that you're doing. So that the way that it's lining up, that one's gonna be, if, if the two-year, like, like, if, if it all goes out, and, and by then, I'm sure things will have changed. But pretty much all social studies, all SEO, like, that's gonna be a big year.
It could be, yes. It, well, it would be.
If, if this all, you know.
And I think that's another, another advantage to a two-year implementation. Sorry about that. The first, the first schedule was an example of a schedule. But I think that allows for a two-year implementation to meet financial needs.
Yeah.
I think to point it out too, we've never had a regular review schedule. This is a far and away improvement. Sorry to cut you off.
Oh, it's okay. I was just wanting to make sure that you keep in consideration on this timeframe for turnover. Because this is one of our critical issues that we're supposed to be dealing with. And if we have this long, drawn-out timeframe, there might be changes of board members, and then that means a whole new round of education with the board members. That's my only thought on the timeframe should be implementation to, consideration implementation of these processes.
Well, I mean, and even if we get into it, like, we may decide that, you know, we like where science is sitting and we don't like, you know, we need to get new curriculum for every single time, every single, you know, one.
That's exactly right.
So, you know, so somebody's gonna go faster because they're like, no, we like this one, move on.
Right.
As all the staff is.
Exactly.
Exactly. Or, right, especially.
Build this deeper later.
Okay, well, I think that all you really wanted us to do, Todd, was look at this cycle, understand that work is being done to get to that point. It's not like we gotta go review curriculum next month.
Right. And we will see, yeah, and, and it's a heads up that you will see curriculum in January for possible adoption in that following call.
Okay.
So we, we have plenty, we do have plenty of time, and we do have time to iterate if we, if we want to. And I, I appreciate that heads up on the, the graphic, I'll, I'll make that change as well.
Okay, next up is board language follow-up. You all have had a chance now to see kind of our, how we're, our cadence. But Tim has an update on his two over a year board linkage meetings from last month.
Yeah, so the Chamber Commerce Board meeting, went to that, first thing up in the morning was us. And I think having this sheet is an overview to, to put people can have in their hand, you know, after the power, before the PowerPoint, after the PowerPoint, to have some details. And I've written some other notes up here that I'd be able to talk about. They, I thought it was very helpful. I don't know, Todd was there at the chamber meeting. There were some pertinent questions that were asked. I don't know if there's anything that would, would mean we need to change our presentation.
But we should bring copies or have that available.
Yeah.
That's a good thing to know.
Yeah, this, this was actually kind of helped was a quick review. The presentation to Make It Better Resources was fairly short, did not meet with near the number of questions that the Chamber Commerce had. And, but again, this was passed out to various nonprofits so that they have an idea of what's going on with the school and numbers and that this is what we're, this is what we're dealing with, talking about.
So did anybody, I mean, in the questions, were there any concern, I mean, any major questions in your mind or was it more?
I don't think there were any real concerns there, mostly, it was mostly curiosities just about what we're doing and, you know, what, what definition of, you know, What a definition of innovation is and what, you know, what is project-based learning, those kinds of things were the. Just those standard questions.
Excellent. Um, next up, I believe that we have, uh, the student, uh, voice has been. Um, confirmed that we will be speaking to a group of students on March fifth. We also, as Mr. Cordray mentioned, have a staff panel, which is a linkage exercise on April twelfth at eight AM. Um, I'm still waiting to hear back from the town board. That's tentatively March sixth. Uh, and we then will just need to follow up with Makers United and the library, so those will likely follow up for that.
So can I just ask a question? Um, on the eighth, what's that gonna look like? Is that having breakfast with staff?
On the twelfth of April? Eight AM, the twelfth of April. Uh, Mr. Cordray. Oh, I will let you, um, give us your perception, um, and then I'll piggyback on top of it.
Okay, it's, I think it's yet to be determined.
Talking about at the March meeting.
My my vision is is approachable. That's my vision. Not, I mean, again, I, maybe I'm coming at this because I spent, I've been on campus now for twelve hours, so I know how these guys go. I today. Try to just be available. And and I think the more approachable and the less formal that we can be to an extent. Gets us in in a position with our staff and teachers that they're not. Opposed to having a, or coffee with us. Right? I mean, really, it's as simple as that. I I, the formality of it, I don't think we're at that place yet.
Do you anticipate sharing our linkage video or your PowerPoint at all? I I'm just curious.
I I would, I would, that's very formal, and I I would almost ask like. Seth or Ed or like I would ask Mr. Cordray to like maybe go out to your leadership and find out. You know, it's much like this, the student panel, like, what do you think they ask them? What do they want from us? Do they want us to do that? Happy to do so. Um, I just want it to be mutually beneficial and not a. Song and dance pony show. I mean, there you have it.
Were we gonna send out some type of little survey about the retention thing we talked about last time? You know, what? What what are your likes, top three things that you love about it? What are the top three things? You know, if you could change anything, what would it be? That way then we could give that feedback, cause I think that was a big part of it, right?
Yeah, and that rolls into one of our next topics of discussion as we did talk about surveying staff. Um, but as to the decision, as to what that looks like is part of the discussion. I don't know that we need to make a formal decision, but we probably should have a discussion around, do we wanna make that ask? And do we make that ask before April? Do we, I mean, and and again, I I, I struggle because it feels like we're. We're directing inside the school and I I wanna be very careful to just really work through Mr. Cordray. When it comes to what is asked of these staff.
We're just there for a listening session.
That's kind of like.
That we're gonna, they're sitting coffee and say, hey, you know. Which, and I I was, how I, in my mind, would approach it, cause I was gonna talk to the various you say, hey, what's. I don't know what your project with your classes are. What kind of projects are you working on? Just that that'd be my only opening thing is first, to get a conversation going. And just to show that I'm I'm interested in what they're doing.
So I I would default to you, Mr. Cordray, and ask you to maybe do a little bit of homework and you advise us. What you think there would benefit your staff and 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 what they're looking for and. You, you have to be that intermediary to let us know. If you believe that a survey would be. Helpful or not, or more of an ask, or, I mean, I don't know, you could. That's kind of, we're there for you and and ourselves, but we're we're there for the staff. So that's that's the charge I would give you, okay? Okay, um, principals and department directors at board meetings. Okay, so this also was brought up during that retention conversation, right? So, uh, the conversation was. Believe it was Victor, I'm sorry if I'm speaking. And historically, I, and Tom, Tim, you've been at the table for years where. At one point, they would come to every single meeting and it was so wasteful. So wasteful.
Wasting their time, wasting our time.
Correct, so I don't think that's the conversation. The conversation is, is there a, is there a happy medium, like, again, work session, hearing from Alice. Once this year is is was great. Hearing from Mr. Greenlee as appropriate is great. I don't know that we're asking for a cadence, but the conversation is, what are we asking for?
So this goes hand in hand with the departments coming up with their protocols and. And that once those are established, I would think that in each department, we should have a review with those department people. Here's what we're gonna do. Here's what we've laid out. And not every meeting, every, you know, that was just bad for everybody.
So it's more like.
So, since I brought it up, let me just say at least what my thoughts were as it relates to this. First of all, my, my communication to principals or anybody else was not about meeting with principals every month. That's not at all what I wanna see. I really wanna see. Some, um, thoughtful, meaningful. Approach to this in the sense of when we already have a schedule of what we're gonna discuss. That's our whole year. We have. So we as a board really need to sit down and take a look at that schedule and say, I'd very like to see. Um, input from principals here, here or here and here. Maybe, you know, I mean, I'm not even wanna put a number on it, but I want us to identify top, the topics. We wanna get input from. So the topic could be that we're gonna be talking a lot about achievement, student achievement. Or school climate or, I mean, and though, you know, we're gonna identify those areas where we would like the principal. Or principals to come and talk about their particular school or their situation. And for for department directors, it's again, when we have time. When we have a situation where we wanna see the bus person, because we're gonna be talking about buses. In much more extensive way, then we should have that person here, because that it's really about. I want their input from their perspective, their boots on the ground every day. I don't get that enough from what we have, not because nobody's doing a good job, but but. The principals is boots on the ground all the time, so they know a lot of what's going on in the schools. And we as as board members should be seeking, and they as as principals should be saying, oh yeah, I wanna talk with them about that. You know, two, three times. You know, and throughout the year. So those were really my thoughts around that. Again, not that we should have them all the time, but then we should have them. And it shouldn't really necessarily be at the board meeting unless we as a board deems it appropriate. Because the public should hear that in a way that everybody should have the opportunity to hear that. But majority of the time, it should be a work session and we should say, we need to give forty-five minutes an hour. Don't, don't put it packed with everything else.
I almost hear also that, and 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 we do this, but we've never formalized it. But it's almost as though what's the tie between which administrator and that objective in the strat plan, right? It's the strat, the strat plan, our strategic plan drives the the universe, right? So for for me, it makes sense that that's a June exercise when we're going back to the strat plan. We're looking at what works, what doesn't, what's gapping, where's the hole. That's a hole. Is, okay, do we wanna make sure looking forward that we bring in these voices? In the work session in which we, um, discuss that particular objective or those results potentially. That's a potential. The other potential that I think we do on the fly and we kind of have to. Is like, like Mr. Greenlee coming to present about something that comes up along the way. Those are the two aspects that I have found value, is bringing someone to the table when it comes up. Not because it's expected, but you're right, we have not done the sort of expected voice versus just. Because oftentimes it's based that we are presented by audio and we absorb, but we don't have a place to bounce. So it's that work session work that I think is is really primary as I hear.
I I mean, this, this should be a two-way discussion, really.
Not just a presentation.
That's not just about, you know, telling me, it's really about a discussion with principals.
And and actually, I think we should consider that on the curriculum discussion. You know, not that I want the whole committee, but maybe a representative to ask the questions of, because that. That could be critical to formulating or finding out what the process was. So it is helpful at times, Todd, not that we don't want you, and then you and audio don't always fit the need. But it's nice to hear from other voices at times who have also worked hard. It is an ask, but I think we need to state clearly that we're not asking because we want you to do more. It's because we want to know more intimately the details behind the board.
Well, we can ask the questions right away.
Yep. Okay, so there's the charge. I mean, that's really not hard to consider moving forward. That's a, add that to June. Make sure we really look at the strat plan and that mindful away. And then keep making sure that we're always considering voices at the table. And I would kind of pitch that back to the board as well and 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 ask you, if you see the initial agenda come out. And you think, hey, maybe we should, should we hear from this person? I would ask you all to. To express that. So that we can consider it, right? That 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 would be the answer that I would. Present back to you. Okay, um, let's see here. Two A, strat plan, yep, we're on, um, two A. So this is review and discussion of two A. Which of course I don't have. I do have, uh, four. Okay, so, uh, what we are reviewing tonight. Uh, and we are not voting on this, this is just discussion. Uh, we are voting on four. Is. I'm gonna read it just so that we all. Client and culture objective two A. Makers School District uses techniques and routines that support the needs of all students using trauma-informed. Practices and social emotional learning. This, we also did spend a bit of time, uh, work session time on, uh, just a few weeks ago. And, um. I do believe we were still waiting for a little bit to be added to the report, correct? Can't remember, I thought we were waiting on something else.
It it may have been added to that link. I I think it would have been added to that link. No, the, it was one year.
No, but it's not on the agenda, so that's why we're all like, hold on, let us find that.
Well, I I think the main thing we were waiting for was. You know, the the rating of the teachers in understanding the trauma-informed practices. I think the last time we looked at this, we hadn't received the data back from whatever survey had gone out, sorry. And there's been a few of them. So I'm not sure. Down here in in the bottom, um, there's still not a lot of. You know, it just says two recent surveys were put out. Um, so then there there is some of the data, so I do think that audio went through and and did put some stuff in there. Um, so do you think this is the most updated? One.
What, sorry.
Did you sign it?
Um, yeah, um, I did and I am, um.
I'm not sure, I guess. Did we, did we get this earlier? Was that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we we've looked at, we've looked at this a while ago.
We're still missing, but we should make sure that it's. It's funny, if you train us to look only at the agenda, we are going to only look at the agenda. Okay. Sorry, guys.
No, you're good. This one has a ton of graphs, um, a lot of. Of, you know, it it's basically going into the trauma board and and what our staff has been trained on. I I do think that we need to keep that at the approaching standard. Because we are. You know, it's part of the teachers' rating or understanding, and if you look at it, you know, like we have two percent or two, five percent are. Still at the slightly knowledgeable and forty-seven percent are still somewhat knowledgeable, so that there really isn't showing. That our teachers have a good grasp on it yet.
Right, and we had some older data in here and that's what we were looking to. Have updated, which won't happen until next year. And then the other commentary was the fall off of the trauma-informed training. So board turnover, teacher turnover, um, those types of. Gaps and making sure that this doesn't fall off of the radar completely. And so for those reasons, I would agree that we have to remain at approaching standard. Um, we are not yet close to at standard. Right, and that would be.
And we were gonna, we were gonna try to follow up. I think, uh, Emily, you mentioned that you were gonna reach out to Dottie and and Todd, I don't know. I guess somebody needs to reach out and say, well, um, what are the next steps?
Right, I think we had asked Mr. Cordray to. Just in the capacity of helping the staff.
Yeah, and or that meeting is scheduled for Thursday.
So some more to follow. Uh, and now I'm even more, um, interested in it because of the conversation matter. Yeah.
For sure.
Exactly. Okay, is that before or after? Last. Okay, objective four C, um, we do, now this is, um. Two A, we're still, we're we're not voting on two A until next month. Four C, though, we are at a point where we are, um. Able to accept the objective report as written, um, and, uh, vote on that.
We prove this as approaching standard.
Can I just read it real quick so people know what we're voting on? So objective four C, Makers School District Secondary, students have the opportunity to identify and pursue individual interests and talents. Students can demonstrate mastery of grade level content through these academic pursuits. And proficiency indicators being advisory time, I'm not gonna read it all. Advisory time, uh, opportunities outside regular coursework such as internships, work study, independent study, post-secondary. And then this is where we really had that large driving discussion around capstone. And where we're headed and what work we need to do in order to to continue to, um, push that. And so, I'm sorry, Mr. Hunter, will you restate your?
Motion would be because Rubrik's one, two, and four were approaching standard, Rubrik three was out of standard, so I think overall we're approaching standard.
So that's the motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, discussion, I think we need to make sure that when we're reviewing our strategic plan, we discuss the overlap. Between, uh, four C and and one A. I think that's what we were talking about before.
What's follow-up in June?
Yeah, we've got, yeah, we're held in June because there is. We can get rid of the longer, make more clear, we'll rub both of them. Might be that in June, but that's a discussion we're in June, I'll tell you right now.
Okay, Heather, will you, uh, call the question, please? Craig Manali? Did you figure out? Tim Hunter? Emily, had you some brown? Motion carries five seconds. Okay. All right, we're at a consent motion, uh, action items A through G. Uh, if we've all had a chance to.
G needs to be read.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
A through F is what I would move to approve by consent.
Is that a move?
That's a motion.
A second?
I second.
And just in discussing that, those are all things about just employee. I I say that because there's a, there's legislation in front of the state of Colorado. It's controversial about sunshine laws and state representatives, some of our state representatives wanting to be able to. Discuss things that are extra to the sunshine laws and they're trying to pass some legislation that would. Cloud the sunshine act and I, and it specifically relates to consent agendas. And so I wanna be clear in our discussions that we're trying to be transparent, that we're not trying to hide anything within the consent agenda. Everything that we're talking about, especially in this consent agenda, relates to. And everything that we're talking about, especially in this consent agenda, relates to resignations and new hires.
In the bill.
Is it?
In the bills, there's always a financial. Correct, okay.
So that's.
You're good, Heather called a question. Craig Manali?
Hi.
Victor Figaroa?
Hi.
Tim Hunter?
Hi.
Emily Hedgeson Brown?
Hi.
Rachel McCorder?
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
And I move we adopt a following resolution according to Colorado statute twenty-two forty-five one oh three in order to effectively remove snow on the campus of the next school district, R six. Board of Education hereby authorizes fiscal year twenty-four category of survey expenditure of eleven thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. To Vandegrift Diesel to purchase the Western eight point oh ultra-mass snowplow plus for the maintenance department.
I move that we accept the capital resolution, capital reserve resolution.
So you're a second?
Oh, correct, sorry.
That was your motion?
That was the motion.
So you're the second? Heather, uh, any discussion at all?
I just would ask if they review the cost. Leave that prior to the actual purchase.
Heather called a question? Craig Manali?
Hi.
Victor Figaroa?
Hi.
Tim Hunter?
Hi.
Emily Hedgeson Brown?
Hi.
Rachel McCorder?
Hi.
Motion carries five zero. There is uh no public participation since the public left. It's just us. Future agenda items, I wanna point out, um, two of these are gonna be repetitive, but the first one being, um. Next uh month, we will be discussing policy J J E. It is a policy surrounding school district fundraising practice. I will tell you, um, this is specifically for the benefit of Craig and Rachel, that there has been a lot of discussion around this. And we probably will need to back up a bit to start from kind of square one. Um, and so we will, I will, I will discuss with Mr. Cordray, kind of, we've got so much stuff all over the place, what we share. Um, and we'll try to share it in advance, more so than prior to the 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 meeting. Um, so that you have plenty of time to work on it, it is not a two paragraph policy, um, and it is wide, has a wide net. Um, so that policy will come to practice or or come to light and discussion. Also, um, I do wanna, I wanted to remind everyone that April twelfth, eight AM. Uh, um, staff board cafe and then the March eighth from eleven AM to twelve PM N W E A P D. Or professional development timeline of which will be recorded, so please just know that and be prepared that that does come into play. In a pretty significant way, moving forward.
I will not be with the people who are reading unless we change it to the twenty-second. If that's something you guys wanna do over here. I have a launch on November twenty-fourteen, so I will not be available.
April twenty-fourth was.
Yeah, it's April.
Wait a minute. So instead of it being the fifteenth, you would like to propose to move it to the twenty-second?
And I don't, it's, it's only if the board is willing on, otherwise I will just, I won't be here.
Well.
We can talk about the next one.
Yeah, I I think what I would like to do is, um, I have. And the reason I bring up the twenty-second as being tough is that is the Grand Canyon trip for the eighth grade class.
Okay.
I will be gone.
Okay.
That following Monday.
I don't need to be here on the.
I'm like looking around, is there any any other eighth grade parents here? Um, I know that you'll have a couple of staff members gone, uh, but let's um. Let's go back to the table and see what is in April and then we'll.
I'd be glad to look over the agenda and give you.
Of course.
Commentary prior to, because we're meeting that Friday before anyway.
We are, yeah.
Staff and if I have anything that I feel.
True.
Needs needs attention, I will bring it up.
Okay.
Well, we have the other uh work session that we're at for, so.
Right.
Let's do back to back.
That's all.
Okay. Anything else, future agenda for anybody that you wanna add to the? No, all right, it's eight fourteen, the next meeting address coming.